Then I'll call the meeting to order, and we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call. Mayor Kransky, I am present. Moko?
Present.
Groko?
Present.
Kufal is absent tonight. Padia?
Present.
And Eker?
Here.
We'll take a moment to consider tonight's agenda for November 1st, 2023. Our only change is under 11G. A resolution to approve the sale of property. We were gonna wait for Scott till all the council can be in present for that one. So we're gonna remove that from the agenda. Any other changes? If not, we'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Eker?
Seconded.
Seconded by Groko. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Was it 11G? That's just the wall bomb property, right?
No, this is the sale of the farmland out by the holding ponds, 11B?
Oh, I'm sorry, 11B. Wait. Oh, 11B? Sorry, I went to the wrong one. So we're moving 11B.
11B?
Yes, 11B.
B?
B as in boy.
Yes, 11B. You said that you wanted all the council members to be present for that discussion. That's where that item is under.
Oh.
2024 street utility project.
Okay.
I apologize for the confusion. Now that we have that straightened out, all in favor to approve the agenda with the change of removing 11B, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Agenda approved. And comments, updates, concerns? Do we have any citizens here who would like to speak tonight? Council members? Any updates from council members, staff? Anything?
I have one item.
Okay.
I just wanted to give a quick update on the Pavilion project. This last, yesterday, our architect was out. Substantial completion of the project has been approved. According to our contract, it was October 31st was the date substantial completion was supposed to be done. Basically, what that means is the city could now enter the building and use it for its intended purpose. And so we could do that as of today, or as of yesterday, actually. There is a punch list, and our architect did, in talking with Cory, our contractor, did put that together. And so there'll be some things that'll be worked on. Most of the items, except for one, will be completed here probably before the end of November. One of them, Cory can explain this better if desired, but it's in reference to our fire emergency tying in with the county. If there would be any fire calls or need, it would go directly to the county. So trying to get that emergency system put into the building, and that's something they're working on and researching right now. I'll send you a copy of the punch list in my Friday email.
Okay. I will say from the pictures we got last week, it looks great. It's just beautiful. Can't wait to see it in person. Good job. Okay, then we'll move on to the consent agenda and take a motion to approve the consent agenda tonight.
So.
Motion by Eker?
Seconded.
Seconded by Padia. Any further discussion about the consent agenda? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried. And we'll come back to our public hearing at 7:00 PM. Communication requests and petitions. There's the Forever Young Senior Center newsletter, St. Mary's Turkey Dinner is coming up, and holiday sign making fundraiser. Department and committee reports. We don't have, we can skip down to 9D. And we have Chief Ickton here to talk with us about the body camera policy amendment.
Got a director time for me getting up here. Excuse me. Evening, everyone. Just have one item on the agenda tonight, which is kind of two in one, but soon learn what that's all about. Basically, here tonight to talk about our body cameras. First, I think we'll start with the policy. Basically, our body worn camera policy does not allow us to mute or pause a recording for any reason while we're on a call. We recently ran into an issue with a judge and a county attorney where they misinterpreted who the officer was talking to while on a call and also what was said. Had some discussion with their county attorney and some other agencies in the area. And I think it's best if we modify our body worn camera policy to allow officers to mute their body worn cameras while they're speaking out of the hot zone with the county attorney or a city attorney, or if they're calling me in the middle of the night. We don't necessarily want all that recorded, or while they're speaking with other officers away from the main problem to kind of figure out what to do. The other agencies in the area have this in their policy already. The only one that doesn't is Arlington. I talked to Chief Glenn over there, and they're also modifying their body worn camera policy to allow for this. So I think it's pretty standard, and I think we need to, I'd like to get that changed. The second portion of the policy, like I said, I'd like to amend, is the, when you download and label the data, the information we had in there doesn't really line up with our options. I put in there what our current options are and highlighted that in yellow. I think that makes more sense than what the current policy has. Right now, it's basically six different or five different evidence labels as far as what kind of evidence it is, or if it's training, or if it's not evidence. This will now line up with, you know, what category that falls into, whether it's a domestic or a traffic stop, so forth. I guess before I move on to the next part, is there any questions about those first two items?
What are the current ones that you have now, Charlie?
As far as labeling?
Yeah.
They're different evidence ones.
Oh, it's okay. I thought you had them here.
I have it right in front of me here. Just apparently have it down a little too far. Evidence criminal, evidence force, evidence property, evidence administrative, training or not evidence. So it doesn't really tell us what it is. The new one obviously will with the 30-plus options there, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended changes to the police policy for body worn cameras.
Seconded.
Move a motion by Eker and seconded by Moko. Any further discussion? Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried.
Thank you.
So that was for the, to approve the policy. I just want to clarify that. Is that correct?
Whatever, yeah.
Do we want to, do we need a second motion to approve upgrading the body worn cameras and amending the lens lock agreement?
I was gonna talk about that next.
Okay. Sorry, getting ahead of myself.
That's all right. It's kind of, it's kind of two in one, so. So yeah, now that we've approved that, I guess the issue or the problem is, is that our current body worn cameras, cameras do not have a mute or a pause button on them. I guess I didn't foresee a reason to have them when we initially ordered it. Went with the cheapest model, and at the time, our policy didn't allow for it, so I didn't, didn't think we needed it. So going forward, if we want to, I guess, upgrade our body worn cameras to the next model up that includes the mute button, it also has some other options there which are laid out. And then the cost of that is initially $4,000. However, he's able to give it to us for half that price over the next five years. So it's basically $2,000 over the next five years. We wouldn't pay anything the first year, so it'd be an additional $500 a year after the first year for four years, total of $2,000 extra. If we don't do that, we could amend our policy, which we've already done, and then we would just have to narrate why we're stopping the camera, turn it off, and then when we're done, turn it back on. However, the problem with that would be if we have multiple phone calls or conversations, we'd instead of having one nice video where you see everything, we'd have, you know, chopped up videos. And then could also raise some questions maybe for some defense attorneys to, well, what really happened when you had the body camera off? This way, it would stay on the whole time. You would just narrate why you're hitting the mute button if you're gonna call the county attorney. You know, go off the scene, mute it, and then start it back up, narrate why before you go back into the scene. And that way, there's just one video, and should be no questions as far as, you know, what you did when the video was muted. So those are kind of the two options we have at this point.
Yeah, I think it only makes sense to be able to mute your body worn camera when you're out on the scene, to sit there and turn it off and turn it back on. Siri makes absolutely no sense, so.
I'm not sure.
Siri doesn't agree with me tonight. So I would be in favor of, I'll make a motion to approve the increased cost of $2,000 over five years, the first year being none, and then the next four being $500 each.
We have a motion by Padia and seconded by Moko. Any further discussion or comments? Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Much appreciated.
And next, we have, we can skip down to 9F, the Fire Department, and Chief Rose is here to talk about the bid for the 1993 tender truck.
Evening, council. You're all aware, tender truck was up for sale due to us receiving our new one, and it did get sold as of yesterday. The bidding closed at 10:30 AM. We had a reserve set at 15,000, and we ended up getting 18 for it, $18,000. It's going up to Grand Rapids to another fire service up there, so it's going to, it's gonna stay in the fire service, so that's a good thing. It'll be leaving here, I think, early next week. Between myself, Ty, and Steve, we'll get that all wrapped up. So that's what's happening there. So I guess I don't know if you guys got to make a motion on that or not, so we can move forward with that.
We will need a motion to approve the sale of the 1993 tender truck.
So moved.
A motion by Groko, seconded by Eker. Just a comment, I saw the new truck at the Public Safety Open House. It's wonderful, so good work on all of that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried.
Just a couple little things to let you know. We had a meeting, what is today, Wednesday? Monday night? We had one firefighter retire, Cory Swenson, if you haven't heard. He had 26 years on as of last month, so he is, he is retired now. That still leaves us at 25 members, which we're in great shape with that, so we are not looking to put anybody on. And that's the reason why we put them last two on last, like, winter, spring type, okay? So we projected good with that. And as of right now, from last year, our call volume is at less than half, so everything is going really, really good, so.
With the two, we're at 25, or?
We're at 25 right now that Cory retired. We had 26.
Okay.
So we're at 25. Usually, we try to stay 24 or higher. That's our goal, so.
Those two, are they done with school now, or?
No. Well, Justin Reich, he is the one that came from Cologne Fire. He just got put on one year probation from when he started, so that'll be up, I think, the end of February. But he's a full-fledged firefighter. You know, he's been fully trained and everything. Caitlin Kemp, she would be considered our rookie. She is starting school, I think, the 15th of this month. So that'll last till approximately end of April, May of next spring. And then she will be full, a full firefighter then once she passes all that, so.
Thank you very much for the updates.
Questions for me? All right, thank you.
Okay, so time to move on to unfinished business. We have the second reading ordinance, number 362, the zoning code amendment.
This is in respect to establishing use or solar gardens in the agricultural district. This went through the Planning and Zoning Commission. They held a public hearing on it. So in your packet is ordinance number 362, establishing solar garden use in the ag district. Again, we don't currently have this in any of our zoning districts, so it was proposed that this would be, ag districts are generally in our outlining areas of the community, and so that seemed to be where we would desire them to be. So that's what they came up with. That's the recommendation. There's also a summary for publication in your packet, too.
So first, we need a motion to adopt ordinance number 362. An ordinance amending chapter 153, section 153.047 pertaining to the conditional use in the agricultural residence district.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by Eker, seconded by Moko. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried. Now we need a motion to approve summary of ordinance number 362 and its publication.
So moved.
Motion by Eker?
Seconded.
Seconded by Moko. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried. Moving down to 11A, under new business, resolution number 2023-28, certifying the collection of unpaid building permit fees and other unpaid invoices.
Okay, thank you. Just a little background, in November of 21, 2021, the council did adopt an ordinance directing, where basically you direct each year to city administrator, myself, prepare an assessment role providing for any unpaid building permits and any other unpaid invoices against respective properties. So basically, for the course of this year, in your packet on page 55 or 56 is a list of the unpaid invoices that the city has to date that we're proposing that would be certified onto the property owner's property taxes for those specific properties identified there. Notices were mailed out the end of September, giving notice to property owners that are on the list here, giving them until October 27th, last Friday, to make payment on what was due, with the understanding if they did not, that this would be brought to the city council and recommended that the amounts due would be certified onto their property taxes. Last year, we did this as well, you may recall. So there's our list. So at this point, I guess I'll open up to any questions. The resolution is in your packet, too, that authorizes such. I'm not sure if there's anybody here that wants to speak on, that's on the list here, but maybe you could, if you're open. This is not a public hearing, but so it's your discretion if you want to allow anybody to speak on their behalf.
Is, did you want to speak, Paul?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll invite you.
What am I hearing for?
I'll invite you to the podium. Try to keep it short, because we have a public hearing coming up.
How long do I have?
Yeah, say 10 minutes at the most.
Well, might go over that. I'm sure you all know me, Paul McGinnis. This is my son, Brian, my other son, Nathan. We've been here before. We started back in July of '22, and you've been in contact with my attorney back and forth. And I just want to start out, at one time, you know, our country suffered from lawlessness. Now it suffers from laws, from no ordinances to ordinances. So right now, I'm supposed to be meeting ordinances from 2010. Is that right, Mr. Helgit?
Well, our current ordinances you are required to meet, yes.
2010, okay. A nonconforming use is generally defined as a land use or structure that was legal when established, but does not conform to the standards of the current zoning ordinance, which is an existing nonconforming use. Minnesota law protects the rights of owners of nonconforming properties, Minnesota statute MS 462.357. They cannot be revoked by new ordinances immediately. They're phased out over time through attrition in the zoned area, with new zoning regulations apply to new or modified uses of the land only. It must have legally existed before the change in the surrounding area. This is known as grandfathering or legal nonconforming use. Allows property owners to continue with activities or operations when zoning bylaws change after nonconforming use has been established. Property we have was purchased in 1954 as an operating blacksmith welding fabrication shop. It'd been in business probably since the late 1800s, which originally sat up by where Brickhouse Meats is now. And sometime in the 30s, it was moved down to the other side of the tracks. So this allows for the lawful use at the time the new ordinance change takes place. So to establish nonconforming use, we must show the use existed on the date spelled out in the zoning code. So if we're looking at 2010, we purchased the property in 1954, and the business has been operating since 1954. That's well before 2010. It was a lawful use at the time. After the change in code use wasn't abandoned, hasn't been discontinued for a year or more. And unfortunately, going through the city attorney, laws are interpreted not to favor nonconforming uses. So the city attorney has no interest in protecting property owners' rights or considering their constitutional rights. He works for you, the city, not the citizens. Courts can limit the use, but cannot abolish them. What protects property owners isn't the land use law, but constitutional law. Under our federal constitution, you can't be deprived of property rights without due process of the law. That includes the fact that you can't suddenly stop what a person has been doing lawfully with their land in the past. This means the grandfathered use might never be revoked. You may not expand or make it larger or increase the quantity or capacity. You might not, you can't change the use and then go back to nonconforming later because then you'd have to abide by the new zoning regulations. Like I say, the property was purchased in '54. It's always operated as a welding, blacksmith, and fabrication shop. I got some pictures here for you. Since... You're after me for stuff that's around the shop. Trailers, cars, other stuff around there. How many other places in town are you going after? How many other places have you been finding $50 a day since July 20th of last year? You got right across from the county garage. You got the old Fullerton lumberyard. You got an old bus there, no license on it, blocks, rubble piled up. Look at the, look at the pictures from down by the county garage. They got all kinds of debris there. Go over to Pinsky's, look at all the stuff there, wood by the wood pile. I haven't heard anything back from the council yet about the theft of my iron rack that was legally, according to the zoning ordinances, being able to be out in front of my building. And I brought that up in November, or July of '22. I lost over $10,000 in iron plus got charged for the cleanup and the use of the dumpster. So where's my restitution for that? That was under the zoning ordinance that I could have that material out in front of my building because it was used in the building. And at that time, we had, the mayor was Mr. Bader, and the city administrator was Lori Young. I came up here. Charlie was down there. He told me, yep, the iron rack can stay. Lori says it can stay. It was during COVID. They wouldn't let me in the city hall. So I went home, called them. They got the city attorney on the phone, said, well, there's an abatement going on. We can't talk to you. And they slammed the phone down on me and went and talked to them. There went all my iron. Remember that, Charlie?
Uh, I remember that day, yeah.
April, April 2020.
Sir, you're welcome to present to the council, but we're not gonna interrogate everybody that's in the panel.
Okay.
So please just direct your comments to the council.
Okay, so you got other pictures. There's others. Anybody else being fined $50 a day? Anybody else got $18,000 in fines out of this for having debris around their lot?
I'd like to just ask you a question, Paul.
Yes.
I do believe you come before council before, and we had an agreement between the city and you. Is that not correct?
No.
That you start cleaning things up, and that you told us?
I started, and then we got into the part where I started getting fined, and it's like, if you're gonna start finding me? And that's been going back and forth between attorneys, between my attorney and the city attorney.
Right, and you know, I'd prefer to leave attorneys out of it. What I'm saying is, the last time you were before council that I recall, we had an agreement that within X amount of days, you were gonna take care of the problem.
No, there's no way that I would have said in X number of days.
Within 30, 30 or 60 days.
There's more stuff down there than to take care of than that.
Well, there was a time period that we discussed.
But it still goes into that property has always been used like that. There used to be three rows of scrap iron out behind the shop that was 12 feet tall that went from the back of the shop all the way out to the unidoor property. And that was used in the shop when you needed materials and everything. There's always been old cars and trailers down.
Hold on just a second. What Chad is saying is that you were given time, like, you were given time to put that fence up, and you put the fence up.
I put the fence up.
It took you a little longer than you thought. We kept giving you time to put the fence up. But then you were supposed to move stuff around, and you kept coming back to council, and you kept getting extensions. But then you just, you just stopped, Paul. And then, and then, you know, then it was ultimately abated because you didn't respond anymore. And something was done, and then now what you did is your property was cleaned up, and you went right back to what it was again. And this stuff here, I mean, I don't know how you use this for a blacksmith shop. You got a boat there. I mean, what are you, what are you gonna do with the boat?
No, no, there's another question I have to ask you, put to the council, in which Mr. Helgit said. It's an industrial zone property.
No, but you said that you use this stuff for your shop.
Right, but an industrial zone property. And I'm told that I can't park my own vehicles down there.
Do you see how this looks?
Huh?
Do you, do you see how this looks?
Yeah, I see how it looks. And it is being cleaned up. The snowblowers are going out. There's been a vehicle hauled out. The buses are going.
All the time, and it just keeps getting worse.
Yeah, and I told you, the buses are going. The owner of the buses are coming to pick them up. I don't own the buses.
Those buses have been there forever.
Yeah, and I don't own them. And part of the problem is, the iron that was taken was supposed to go into one of the buses. That was for rebuilding the inside of the bus into seating and everything, and part of that went. And that's, there's been stuff out there all the time. My father, and I've provided pictures, I've provided letters. There's always been stuff down there. There used to be three, four cars lined up, a tractor lined up, a couple of trucks, two iron racks. There's always been stuff down there. That's all the property has always been used. And it's off the beaten track. Take a look around Gaylord in the main area. Take a look at Cron's Small Engine. How much stuff is sitting alongside his, his building that people see every day? Just driving by on the highway or going down to the Human Services Building. You know, I was told that, like, my iron rack got loaded up and hauled away because it harbored rice, mice, and snakes. But yet, you have a place a block and a half away from a green elevator that's got wood and stuff sitting out by the railroad tracks. And that's okay. So the thing is, when you apply the law, do you pick and choose just one person to apply the rules to? Or do you apply it to everybody?
I, I hear what you're saying, and it should be applied to everybody.
Right.
Hopefully, we are, hopefully, that is how it's going.
And it isn't. Because, give me proof that everybody else that doesn't have their place up to standards to the 2010 zoning ordinance, that they're getting fined $50 a day.
City's not obligated to enforce ordinances against everybody across the board, but we do make a good faith effort, consistent with our resources, to enforce our ordinances as best we can. So, no, there's not going to be 100% uniform application of ordinances. But certainly, the city has a track record for working with residents, property owners, to clean up ordinance violations. We've done it in the past, it's been before council on numerous occasions.
So, so in other words, you don't recognize grandfather rights at all.
Excuse me, I'm talking. In this case, this is a perfectly appropriate and applicable, applicable use for the administrative fines ordinance. There was a zoning code violation. We had discussions, I'm looking at the letter here, in August, September, and November of 2022, which I believe is when a lot of this was going down with your attorney. And he made a lot of the same assertions that you have made tonight, essentially stating that you've used this property for certain uses and have continued that. And so, even though the zoning ordinance states one thing, you're stating you've been essentially grandfathered in. Those were the same assertions your attorney made. And we, Steve and I, had respectfully asked for anything, any evidence to substantiate that as we were thinking about what is the appropriate way for the city to go forward. And we never heard anything back. So for you to assert that there's been ongoing discussions between attorneys, they're just, that is a misrepresentation. The city was communicating in good faith, and then, when we had prompted your party, your attorney, and you to provide any evidence to substantiate that this use had been continuing, we haven't received anything, which is why we had to move forward with these administrative fines.
Because I, I did provide them with, to him. So if, I'll have to speak with him and see what they want.
But that, I mean, that is just a quick summary of where we stand tonight. It's that we, we were working with you to figure this stuff out, and we never heard anything back. And then, monthly, he's been receiving notice that this fine continues to accrue. Still haven't heard anything back. So now, on the eve of this getting assessed against property taxes, there's all of these assertions that people haven't been communicating, that, you know, there's been all of this, you know, malfeasance on the city's part. We've made every opportunity, every chance we've had to work with you. And we, and there's been zero follow-through. So, I mean, that, that is, I guess, I don't know if Steve, if you want to add any context to this, but...
Actually, I'm going to interrupt at 7 o'clock, so we have to go on to our public hearing.
So we'll come back to this.
We'll come back to it after the hearing. Okay, we're moving back to item 7 in our agenda, public hearing regarding ordinance number 363, an ordinance amending the city of Gaylord Charter, particularly section 54, powers and duties of council. I'll open, I'll open the public hearing and let Steve talk about the details of it.
This is an item that went through the Charter Commission. The commission meets at least annually, and they met in September. And they went through the charter, and they had one recommended change, and this is what it is tonight. So in front of you, it's ordinance number 363. And basically, this kind of goes back to an earlier discussion last year of the council in reference to our employee recognition policy. I reported back then, and Mark and I reported, that the state auditor's office basically came out with a notice a number of years ago stating as far as doing these kind of parties where the city would be able to or pay for them for employee recognition, or, or different, those types of events to basically the city host at a reasonable cost, up to two events per year, is what we have in a code here, or in a proposed ordinance. The state did put in that letter though, too, that we could, if we had a charter, and we wanted to amend that charter to include language that would allow for this, that would be acceptable. And so, that's what brought us to this point. So, this, we've always had a policy, as you know. Basically, the language that's here is pretty much mirroring that, what we've had in the past. This just makes it acceptable to, to the state then. So basically, again, I'll just quickly read these three items here that we're proposing. It authorizes the city to host and reasonably expand public funds for up to two events per year for current employees, employees who have retired within the prior year, city council members, and the mayor, and, and their spouses or significant others. Two is to authorize the city to expend public funds to provide awards to employees based on their years of service at a reasonable cost. And lastly, authorize the city to expend public funds for retirement reception for a city staff member or elected official, including a reasonable cost for a retirement gift. So again, those are things that we've done in the past. We're just putting this so it will be acceptable to the state to be able to do it. Mark, is there anything you want to add?
No, that was a good summary.
Does anyone have any questions? Any public comment? Then I will take a motion to close the public hearing. Moved. Motion by Groko, seconded by Eaker. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, motion, uh, hearing is closed. We will address this later on in our agenda under item, I think, 11D. So, there's nothing else with that. We can go back to our discussion. And Steve, you were saying something right before I interrupted to do the public hearing.
Mark was just asking if I had anything additional to share. Councilmember Chad was correct, what he had said earlier in his recollection. Paul has been here before, at least in my tenure, he's been here. And there was an agreement, it started back last year. In April, I had sent him a notice at that particular time. And then he came to a meeting, I believe it was in July, and, or actually in May, and the council gave him 60 days. And he agreed to it. That was the agreement. And I followed up with a letter to him, based on that discussion and that agreement at that meeting. And then, after that 60 days had expired, when the property wasn't cleaned up, we brought it back here for another discussion. And as at, at that time, you had decided to go ahead and enforce the administrative penalty. And a letter was sent again then. And the letters were all sent certified, so I do, and he said it's signed for him. So I do have that. So we do have a record. And as Mark mentioned, with Paul's attorney, we did, he did have a number of questions, and we did respond to them as far as some of the back, the background, as far as our zoning code is concerned. We gave him a lot of the history as far as when our code was, was actually originally established. We gave him information about when this property was rezoned. It was at one time, back in, before 1972, it was zoned R2, residential. It's now zoned, as Paul mentioned, industrial. So that's how long ago the change was made. And at that particular time, a conditional use for a shop, as he described, would have been acceptable. Except there was never a conditional use permit that was ever applied for, to my knowledge, certainly not one that was ever given. And so that's where, we're kind of at that point, where it is not in compliance because there's no conditional use permit. And certainly, there is no authorization for that type of outdoor storage in our code.
I don't know how everyone else feels, but I, I know there's attorneys involved, and I think right now that it's best addressed through that avenue as far as, we're not going to try it here.
Okay.
So I, I think we just move on to our, our resolution.
So my attorney will be following up with you.
That's reasonable.
Okay.
If the council doesn't have any further discussion, we'll need a motion to approve resolution number 2023-28, a resolution certifying the collection of unpaid building permit fees and other unpaid invoices to be collected with property taxes.
So moved.
We have a motion by Padilla. Do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Moko. Any further discussion or comments?
I will just make a quick comment that the city has a pretty good track record over the last number of years, going back. And it is dealing with different properties, you know, not just one property owner, several. And one of the bigger ones in the last few years is on the east edge of town by the Welcome sign. Everybody knows about that one. And it took, it, it does take time for these things. And so the city's not just going after one, one property owner here, so.
And I do want to commend the council. I know discussions and opportunities happened before we got to this point. So I, I think good effort was made by all of you.
I agree with that. As the mayor said there, unfortunate, you know, when, when attorneys get involved, when it gets to that point, you know, the, it kind of shuts down the open discussion here in the dialogue, so.
I agree. Okay, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried. Okay, we'll move on to 11C, the personnel policy, policy amendment, earned sick and safe time.
Okay, this is an item that was actually in front of the city council during a work session back on October 4th. At that point, had presented a draft of this language here to be incorporated into our personnel policy. Effective January 1 of 2024, a new earned sick and safe time law goes into effect and requires employers to provide paid leave to all qualified employees. A qualified employee is defined as one that works 80 hours in a given year for the employer. So regardless of their status as far as an employee, whether they're full, part, seasonal, they, they, as long as they work 80 hours, we are required to provide this earned sick and safe time, or E S S T. So basically, at that October 4th meeting, we did talk about, under the state, the new state law, there are three options or three methods that the council can choose from as far as how to incorporate this. And two of them had basically what they referred to as a front-end load, where you give the employee whatever amount of sick hours you're going to be, they'd be eligible for in a given year. So we went through those two options. And then the, the third though, that you agreed to do was the accrual option. Basically, under the state law, an employee can accrue one hour of sick leave, or this E S S T leave, for every 30 hours worked. And then the maximum accrual would be 48 hours in a given year. The 48 hours, or any hours that are not used in a given year, are able to be carried over to the next year. But the, no more than 80 hours can be accrued at any given time. That is the maximum. We can go ahead and adopt this, this new language into our personnel policy and continue to have our, our, our current sick leave policy as well. There are some things in this new law that are not included in our current sick leave policy. It really kind of expands it, expands the, what it can be used for and whom you can take sick leave for, basically. Whereas, I, I think, maybe a little bit over and above the standards that we've, we've had in the past. I mean, generally, you could still use it for your normal sick leave and stuff like that, employee's mental or physical illness, injury, or other health condition. But this is kind of new, closure of an employee's place of business due to weather or public emergency. That could include like a school closing. So if you had children and their school was closed, or their daycare provider, they were closed, that would be an eligible use of this E S S T. Should note that this is not just for the public sector, this is also the private sector. So this is everybody. We're all, we all have to abide by this new law. Some other things, just a quick mention, I'm not going to go through it all, I know it's quite detailed. And this is basically taking this all from the law. So, one of the, some of the things as far as family members that it's extended for, it's, you could take the sick leave for a child of a sibling of an employee, basically meaning a niece or nephew. You could take it for an aunt and uncle. You can, any of your spouse or registered domestic partner, any of those things, they all apply. So whatever you can take, you can take them for your spouse or your domestic partner. Lastly, again, I'm, I'm really going through this quickly, but up to one individual annually, you can designate to take sick leave for. So it doesn't necessarily have to be a blood, blood relative, it could be anyone that you designate. So that's, that's something that we have not experienced in the past. We don't have that currently in our sick leave policy. Couple of things from the work session that I want to mention that we did not, I don't recall that we made a decision on this, if this is something you wanted to incorporate. I did not incorporate them into what you have in the packet right now. So I'm just putting this out there for your consideration. The use of the leave, as far as how many increments, or what's the smallest increment that you have to use it in, would it be 15 minutes, or hour, whatever that might be, is long under the law, as long as it's not more than four hours. So generally, I think most of the time, 15 minutes is kind of our least that we would allow. But you could, our current sick leave policy, I was just reviewing it, it's actually absent on that. We don't have a requirement. So you could certainly choose not to have a requirement, but I'm just bringing it up for your thought and consideration. One of the other things, a city can establish in its policy that employees are required to utilize the E S S T leave, hours first, for qualified absences before our regular sick leave. So if you have enough time, you, you could make that requirement, whether or not you want to or not. I think the idea is, I don't know what the idea is exactly, but one of my thoughts is, is, you know, there's a lot more options as far as what you could use the leave for under the E S S T versus our own sick leave policy. Maybe they're trying to make them use that leave up first. I don't know. I, I honestly don't know. I've asked the league, and I haven't got a response on that. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention, the city can, can, can continue to provide current sick leave in addition to the, I already mentioned that, to the E S S T leave. It should be mentioned, too, that you don't earn leave hours when you're on vacation or sick leave itself. So it's only for hours worked, which would also include overtime hours. You know, it's kind of a, it's a pretty lengthy thing here, this, this new law. There's a lot to it. There's been a lot of questions around the state. We've, we've been getting a lot of emails on this. There's still a lot of questions as far as like firefighters, volunteer firefighters. We still haven't gotten even unelected officials. We haven't gotten a definitive answer from the state on that yet. So there's still a number of things that are trying to get decided, and we're waiting to hear back from them. So one of the things I want to prepare you for is, it's possible that this might come back in front of you for an amendment at some point in the future. But for right now, this is basically, I'm getting this language, a lot of it from the state statute, as well as the League of Minnesota Cities.
I would like the minimum to be either like an hour or two hours. I don't like 15 minutes, it gets too nitpicky. What else was the other thing I wanted to make a decision on?
She's, she would like the minimum use is an hour, so it's not so, an hour.
Or two hours.
So it's not so nitpicky.
I would be okay with an hour, but the 15 minute thing is... No.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
And then I, I think, yes, we should use the, the sick time first before the regular.
I don't know that I necessarily would agree with that just because this includes like school closings and that type of thing, where they wouldn't have to use their PTO for, that they would use this for instead. So if they use all this, and then they have a school closure, then they're into their PTO? Is that...
I, I agree with Lynn, just due to the fact, I, I don't, unless I'm missing something, I don't see the benefit, the city dictating which one to use first. I mean, financially, it does, there's no difference, correct? the city dictating which one to use first, I mean, financially, it does, there's no difference, correct, to the city?
No.
Is it, would it be?
The only thing it could be is that they might have more opportunity to take more time off because of the options that are available to them to take time for sick leave under this program.
Isn't it going to get kind of complicated to keep track of that? So wouldn't you rather have us do something for first one or second one, or you just want, want, would it be easier just to do whatever, whenever they want?
I'm, I'm thinking, I, I guess I can only speak for my viewpoint on this. Everybody, a lot of us are going to be in the same boat, so I'm going to, I'm going to choose personally to just use my standard sick time and leave this thing alone, that's just me, but unless something would, you know, it, it has some of these unique situations.
Yeah, it's got some very unique situations.
Administratively, we talked, I mean, it's kind of a.
There's not a problem within the employees, so overreducing their sick time, it's just the opposite, everyone has time balances.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't see that being a problem.
I was just trying to think of for you to be keeping track of it, it, it.
Well, the easiest way would be, you know, if, if nobody ends up using it, it's pretty easy to keep track of. I think in the back of our minds, that's what, I mean, it's there, it's a mandate, sure, but I would just leave it alone myself.
I'm, I'm fine.
You know, I guess my take on this is, there's, uh, there's not a problem now, but you know, you always establish for this, for when there is a problem. And, um, I, I guess that, um, there is a potential for abuse of this because it is so open. And, you know, you don't even have to have a, a doctor's letter now. Like, uh, before, after you missed three days' work, um, you had to get a doctor's letter, right? Well, now, um, I can, Chad's my boss, I can write a letter, Chad says, hey, you give me a letter, you've been all three days. Chad, um, I've been sick, here's your letter, that's, that's all I have to do now, right? So I think just because of the potential abuse of this, um, I'd be more, um, in favor of going along with this getting used first and then going to, um, the sick time after that. Um, and again, it's nothing against the staff that we have now, I, I just think that, um, there's a potential for it to be abused in, um, the future by someone that's coming up next.
Can we require a doctor's note to come back if like somebody got hurt or said they got hurt, or?
We, we can, but as Tony was pointing out, if they are unable to get that doctor's note, they actually could write the note themselves under the law.
What if the, wouldn't we have, um, case, so then they came back and then they got hurt right away again, or whatever? Wouldn't we be liable then? You know, for letting that person come back when they weren't?
We're not requiring them to come back, I mean, they need to provide us proof that they're able to do their job and perform the duties always.
I'm probably not explaining what I'm thinking, right?
Okay.
No, it's such a big project, I mean, it's. And this is something I honestly see as amending as we learn, as we go. Um, I, I think, a lot of other businesses and cities are in the same boat.
What are your thoughts on it, Steve?
I, I guess I share some of the thoughts that Tony had mentioned, um, that there is that potential anyway. Certainly, they don't have any issues today, um, but there's some opportunities here that maybe, where we could run into some situations where certainly there's more opportunities for them to be off. And, um, you start bringing in not even your own household, um, family, and now you can take for extended families and, it gets pretty in-depth, um, as far as, and then even just choosing somebody, picking somebody, whoever that might be, that you want to take sick leave in a given year for. Right now, yes, we don't have any issues. And a lot of times, we usually don't try to, um, over-enforce if there's no issues in place. But, uh, I do have some reservations that there might be something, and it'd be easier now to put it in place and, and we don't have to worry about responding to anything later.
But doesn't matter how they use it, because at one point, it doesn't matter if I say I'm going to use it because I, using it because the school closed, I'm using it, I'm going to say I want to designate, I want you, I want to use it for whoever, my neighbor, because I'm going to take care of them, you still have to let me use it.
Right.
Even though you say that I have to use one or the other first, I still have the opportunity to use it.
Opportunity is always there to use it, yes, as it's an eligible use.
But I think that the, doesn't the, the department head get the choice on which, which sick time he's going to assign that to?
Not the department head, it would have to be in the policy.
Okay, I thought that the law, the law said that the employer would get to choose which type of sick time it was going to fall under.
That you, you could, but you have to, this is the only language that I found, where you basically are saying, if you have hours to use in the E S S T, then that will be the hours that you use first, if you're going to be out on sick leave.
I, I just, I think it's terrible policy by the state. And, and no matter what we do, you, you take something bad and all we can do is try to make it a little less bad. But we can't clamp down on something, they obviously made this to not have anything clamped down on a lot of areas here. So I, I agree with a lot of, a lot of you folks that said that we'll probably have to do more amendments to this as we go. But I mean, what do we do with this? I, I, I'm just fine leaving it alone for now and, I don't know.
But then again, it just gets accumulated, it's not like we're front-loading.
Right.
It just accumulates, so there really isn't going to.
Only up to eighty hours, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
And how much does it accumulate each month?
It's one hour for every thirty hours worked.
Real convenient.
Yeah, it would be forty hours to make it easy.
Up to, up to forty-eight hours a year, eighty hours max. We'll be back visiting us, so.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So we have consensus about using a one-hour increment? Do we have consensus about what order they should be used first? Or do we just want to leave it as it is and address this down the road?
I just don't think we can think of every scenario as how it always is, and we think we're making the right decision, and then it's like, oh yeah, well, we didn't think about that. So I don't know if it'd be better just to leave it right now and then have to amend it as we go.
I agree with Lynn.
Maybe revisit it mid-year.
Yeah.
Sure. See how things are working.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable approach. I mean, it, it kind of is how a lot of these policies typically unfold. New law, not really sure how it's going to be, you know, implemented citywide, so, um, it seems like a reasonable policy. I, I would say just give it some, a few months or even as long as it takes for an issue to come up, and then you can amend it then.
You know, my, my final thought, some fellows out there, it's always, it's always, um, easier to start off a little bit more difficult and then change it to make it a little easier than to go from a little, you know, um, softer and then making it harder. We see this with, for example, our insurance, you know, we don't want to drop that down to a, a lower tier because, you know, we value our employees, and, and so you don't want to drop their insurance down because they're used to a certain level now, that goal level. So I think this isn't the same as that, but it's along those lines in that I think that if you establish this and then all of a sudden you change it to something else that's a little bit more stricter, then, you know, there's going to be, there's going to be feedback on that. So in my opinion, if you start out stricter and then you're like, wow, it's not really a big deal, so let's just loosen this up a little bit, I think you're better off going that route. That's, that's just my two cents. So if you guys are in favor of going the other way, I'm, I'm with you, but I just want to throw that out there.
So, well, just a little example to what you're, um, so a, as this starts January first, right? Somebody wants to use a eight hours of sick time come January. At the end of January, when they actually work thirty hours and they got one of these hours accumulated, so now they got to use one of these hours, and they're going to be using seven hours of the other stuff. Right, isn't that what's going to happen? Potentially? Or if, if they qualify for both, I, you know, that.
Yeah, there's going to be some, it is going to overlap, yeah.
I just think they're too separate, I just, I don't know, they seem, there's a lot of things you'll be able to use this for that you can't use your standard sick time for, right?
Yeah.
I don't envy Lori for having to track this, this is going to get so confusing.
I don't either.
So.
How does everyone feel about Tony's suggestion?
On the island. This and the cats.
I can go either way.
Yeah.
It's this and the cats, I don't know what you guys have in common.
I just feel it's, like, it's a shot in the dark, either way we go.
Yeah.
I think we're just trying to do what we think might be best, but I don't think there's any way for us to know that.
I'm really, I'm, I'm okay, I just, that's just my gut feeling in life.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the personal policy amendment for earned sick safe time.
With the one revision to it, as Jessica noted, everybody was, seemed to be in consensus with, was a minimum one hour use.
Increment use.
Increment.
Okay, we have a motion by Moko, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Groko. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carried. Moving on to eleven D, ordinance number three sixty-three, an ordinance amending the City of Gaylord Charter. It's related to our public hearing.
I'll move to approve ordinance number three sixty-three, amend in the City Gaylord Charter, section fifty-two.
Motion by Moko, seconded by Eaker, any, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carrying. Resolution number, or item number eleven E, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine, a resolution approving an inter-fund transfer from Special Fire Fund, Fund two-two-five, to Capital Fund, Fund eight oh-one.
So as Justin Rose shared, uh, the truck has been sold. So, um, one of the things, as you recall, was as far as financing the purchase of the vehicle, was that the fire department was going to, uh, contribute seventy-five thousand from their gambling fund. And, um, Fund two-two-five is where, when they make, uh, contributions to the city, that's the fund that everything goes into. So, um, the purchase is being made on a Capital Fund eight oh-one, and so we need to make, uh, do this resolution in order to complete the transfer.
So we need a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine.
So moved.
Motion by Eaker. Do we have?
I'll second.
Seconded by Padilla. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carried. Next, we're, we have eleven F to reschedule the special city council meeting.
County had a conflict, um, so we're asked to, um, change the meeting to, uh, November ninth versus the seventh. GFW has a school election that day, and so that makes it a conflict for the county under state law. No meetings between six PM and eight PM, so, um, on election day, and so that's what, where that's coming from. So proposes to change the meeting from the seventh to the ninth. You had taken action to set that special meeting, so we need to take action again to reschedule. Same time, six o'clock, six o'clock, over at the courthouse.
So moved. We have a motion by Eaker.
Seconded.
Seconded by Groko. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carried. Next, moving on to eleven G, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirty, a resolution approving the sale of certain real property to MG Wallbaum Company.
So this is a pretty easy one, um, we're kind of knocking on the door of a closing, and this is one of kind of the last steps that, um, MG Wallbaum's title company has required so that they can get insurance, is just a quick, easy resolution approving the deed, which is going to convey the property interest and then the environmental indemnity agreement. So those are kind of the two material real estate documents. And so we just need a resolution approving the transaction and then those two documents. So that's what's before the council tonight.
I think we've been working on this for about a year and three quarters, something like that. So it's a long road in the, uh, making, but, uh, it needed, needed to be done a long time ago, but we're finally there. I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty.
Motion by Moko, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Eaker. Any further comments or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carried. We don't have anything else on our agenda, so we just need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Eaker.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Groko. All in favor say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.